Your life, Commissioner.
All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session, specifically Budget Work Session for Thursday, October 6, 2022. It's 9:05 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Vice Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Gary Edwards is present through our Zoom platform, and Commissioner Mejia will be joining us just in a few minutes. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're slated to go this morning until 11:30. We may take, we'll likely take a break halfway through at the discretion of the Chair. The agenda for this first piece from 9:00 to 9:30 is a presentation from Thurston County Sheriff Law Enforcement. Says specifically medical services at the jail, and then we'll have Auditor and some other follow-up, general work session follow-up from the Board. So Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, I guess I could introduce the team. We have County Manager Romero Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, we have our Sheriff John Snaza, Todd Toma, one of his chiefs, your-
Captain Chaval.
Captain Chaval, we haven't met, so it's nice to meet you, and our budget team. So I'm gonna let Robin kind of introduce what we're doing here this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager, and as you stated, today we are continuing our review of the budget submitted by offices and departments. We're going to start today with the sheriff, thank you so much for being here, to talk about the medical services at the jail specifically, and to answer any other questions that the Board may have about the requests from the sheriff's office. At 9:45, we have the auditor joining us to look at trends in revenues. Then we will continue on with the review of line items and the overview, and a look at some of the major funds in Thurston County. This afternoon, we have District Court joining us to talk about adult probation and the reduced revenue coming from DUIs. And at 2:30, Public Defense will join you to talk specifically about the business analyst position request, but again, any other budget questions that the Board may have. So it's a full day today. We're going to have a working lunch, and I'm going to turn it over to Sheriff Snaza, and again, thank you so much for being here this morning.
Well, thank you for having me, and thank you for having a working snack section as well. So I really do appreciate that. The first is the medical services at the jail. We went out for an RFP due for renewal at the end of 2020, and the process was followed. The only change in the RFP request was to move from an 18-hour day to a 24-hour coverage, and we only had one vendor submit for the bid. The cost of the service increased to $662,000 over the previous allotment, and most of that is due to the cost of what a nursing staff costs per hour. We've worked with Robin Campbell to develop a potential solution for this shortfall, and currently our budget, we have $468,000 in contract housing, which we haven't used in recent years. So we suggested, and we agreed, that $400,000 of that contract housing go into medical services to help cover the costs, and that we requested the budget resolution to contain a proviso that recognized this shifting of funds should the need for increased contract housing occur in the future, meaning that we would come and ask if we were, if we had more contract housing going on in the future, that we would come back and ask for more monies if we could. The cost increase was partially due to the change from 18 to 24, and like I said before, it's providing medical services and increased personnel costs for nurses and other specialists. And we, we strongly feel that this is a priority to stand by the switch to a 24-hour-a-day coverage to reduce risk and meet the needs of the inmates. And what our request of the Board is to provide additional funding to cover the remaining, it would be $262,000. And just, just for information, if there was questions asked, we would have an additional $68,000 set aside for contract housing should we need it. We just wanted to make sure we had something there, just in casers. Because I don't really know, and maybe Todd or Sean could share, but we really don't know how this changed after October 31st with the Governor changing over the emergency powers and the COVID, what that's, how that's gonna affect us as a sheriff's office, both in law enforcement and in the corrections side.
Good morning, Commissioner Edwards.
Good morning. How are you doing, Sheriff?
I'll jump in with a question. The, so the 262 matches up with the 400 from contract, and then that leaves you with the 68 that you'd like to have, or is that an additional, somewhere we come up with an additional 68?
We have an additional, that would leave us with the 68,000 for contract housing should we need it.
And currently in the sheriff's budget, they have $468,000 earmarked for contract bids.
So we're gonna shift 400?
So 400 would, would help to pay for the medical services, and that would leave 68,000.
Commissioner Edwards. I guess the only thing I'd say is part of this move for 24-hour coverage is a liability issue. Maybe you were advised from our risk people to move forward on?
I would say yes. Definitely for the risk, and looking at what is now expected that we should be able to provide 24-hour coverage to all inmates that we have.
And wasn't there a pretty severe case in Washington State on an award, I think maybe Spokane County, that there was quite a loss from some type of litigation involving 24-hour coverage?
There was. I mean, the reality is, is correctional medical, which over that is your medical services, your dental services, and your mental health services usually is probably the most questioned, the most scrutinized, and the most litigated portion of jail operations.
Thanks. Okay, County Manager.
Quick question. This maybe to, for the benefit of the viewing public, can you explain what services are we talking about? Because we're required to provide services to, in the jail. So I think for the general public to understand what those services are, I think we'll-
So the services provided, I mean, essentially, the easiest way to explain it is the same level of service that defendants receive in our jail are the same level of service that they have access to in the community. I know sometimes it's, it's discussed, you know, relative to, you know, you know, they end up in jail. But the reality is, they're human beings, they're entitled to receive appropriate medical care, dental care, mental health care. So from a humanity standpoint is the right thing to do, and from a liability standpoint, from a legal standpoint, we're required to provide those services.
Thank you. Because I think the public needs to understand, I believe, there is, it's not an option.
No, it's not an option.
It is a requirement that we need to provide those services, medical services to those clients at the jail, and, and the cost increases. And I think that's probably what the sheriff's analysis stated, went through our proposals, proposals, I believe, carried this year, 2022. As I recall, the main increase was just in labor.
The hardest, the easiest way to explain, maybe Sean could help me out, is that the people that come into our facility are not always the most healthy as people, or have received any medical attention at all to some of the needs that they really do find themselves in. And when they find themselves in an environment, enclosed environment, then they tend to need more medical services at that time.
So, Robin, we've got, you said we should ask questions of the, of the team of the other items?
Yes.
So I don't know if they're, if they're, because we've got 15 minutes or so more, and there were a couple other items that came up yesterday that I think the Board would like to ask about. Are you guys good on the medical services, Commissioner Mejia?
Yeah, I'm good on that.
Okay, so, just so we can structure our time, the two other items we discussed, one was the rebound program, and, and that sounded like, I'll just preface it, it sounded like a great program, but we, you know, we were remembering that it was kind of a one-year pilot, so we were just kind of wanting to hear back from you guys, like, how did it go the first year, or did you feel like it was valuable and all that, you know? And then the second thing that we discussed was the Board had put on our wish list, not knowing how much money we'd have, like more, more deputies, two more deputy positions. And then when we got into the discussion, you know, we talked about, well, to the extent that you have vacancies, is that the right, if we had money to do it, we don't know if we will, but is that the right thing to do, or is there some other recruitment strategy, or some other thing that would make your life better than adding two more positions that are unfilled versus helping you fill the ones that you're having trouble filling? So those were the two topics that the Board had questions and discussion about, and I'll open it up to my seatmates if they wanted to ask anything specific about the rebound or the recruitment issue.
No, I, I think you've covered it, Sheriff.
Okay, so maybe we'll hear, hear what you guys have to say about that.
So I'll first talk about the rebound program, and we call it also the tactical athlete. So far, we've had sick staff, and 73 days have been saved, and it's caught, the rebound program costs us $29,000 a year, and we've already saved that in costs, meaning that people returning back to work sooner. Because we're usually seeing if someone needs to go out, let's just say for an MRI, it takes six to eight weeks to go out and get an MRI. That individual is out that entire time. With the tactical rebound, with the rebound program, we're able to get them in immediately, and that they're able to see, be seen by a doctor sooner, and then can be prescribed whatever needs to be done, whether it be surgery, or whether it just be going through and getting physical therapy. So we've seen that happen, and just, just today, we've already saved, the money that we've spent on it already, just in six months, we've saved it.
Saved it from where?
Saved it in external costs, meaning more costs for more deputies to have to fill in positions while that, those deputies are out, hurt.
So less overtime?
Let, right, less overtime, and less impact, less impact on the sheriff's office itself as a whole, on day-to-day operations. And to be honest with you, it really benefits the deputy because it gets him back to work. So they're not using up their sick leave time, or something like that. They're getting back to work soon, sooner. So, and that's the biggest complaint that we've had with the deputies, and I know Robin and I have spoken about it many times, and Romero, we've spoken at our coffee chats about how deputies are just frustrated with not being seen right away, and having to wait, and not being able to come back to work. And so this has actually been, actually, it's been a really great program that we've been able to utilize. So it's definitely benefited the men and women of the sheriff's office, both in corrections and in operations.
Also, in addition to what you just said, Sheriff, by coming back to work sooner, it will not be under LNI for a longer period of time, which, you know, and, and that is probably more difficult to quantify, you know, what the benefit of that is financially. But intuitively, that's what it is, you know, you reduce the time in which those sheriff deputies who have been injured be under LNI.
Exactly.
And then ultimately, like, let's say that happens, LNI, where does, where does the county budget come in in terms of the LNI claims? So-
The LNI pays off in a couple of ways. We'd have to talk to Maria, but I do believe that in these cases, we pay LNI, or else we're paying the employee lost wages.
They, LNI gives some 65% of their wage.
Right.
That's, that's how that works, and so-
Don't we, like, make up the gaps somehow?
No, they, that's what they, they normally go on, and the way they do it is they receive, let's say they, they receive their paycheck, because they're receiving LNI too, so they have to turn back into a paycheck. But what the suggestion was to us is that, how do you get these individuals not away from work, but back to work and feel like they're contributing? So we try to find a way that they can come back to work and be, be on limited duty, but we don't have a lot of limited-duty positions for the people to go out on LNI, for them not to collect LNI. So instead of them just sitting home and collecting 65% of their pay, we try to get them, this rebound program has gotten them back to work sooner, to where they're not on LNI as long, or they're not away from the sheriff's office as long.
Right. Where it really pays off with LNI is in the experience rating. So there's a lag, but if we have less people out for less time, then our experience rating will eventually theoretically go down.
And that affects how much they charge us?
Our rates, yes.
And the money that they charge us comes out of where?
Well, the, for the sheriff's office-
Rate, oh, it's like a-
It comes out of general fund. Right. So, and LNI rates are applied based on occupation?
Occupation, they have, they have categories.
Uh-huh, there are occupational tiers, and the sheriff, of course, is in the highest-
Is the highest.
Risk is based on risk.
Tier, yeah.
And it saves employees money too, because the way LNI is set up, the employer pays 50% of one, because there's medical impact of it. The employer pays the entirety of one, and the other split, the other one is split 50% on the employer and 50% on the employee. So when our rates go down, the amount of money that comes out of our pockets also decreases. So it's a benefit to everybody.
Couple of bucks a month, you'll see it on your paycheck, but for the sheriff, because they are high-risk, it's more than just a few dollars. So that will pay off eventually, but where I think you see the immediate reduction is in the overtime costs in the sheriff's office, because they're not having to bring someone in to cover that shift.
Are you sure there's any questions?
I, I guess I'd just follow up with that, because, because the sheriff's office, number of deputy sheriffs per thousand population served is either the lowest, or one of the lowest in the state of Washington, we don't have the luxury then of having people away from work without overtime. We just, because if we're gonna fill and make minimum safety issues according to our contracts, we've gotta pay that overtime. So it isn't a case of, well, let's just not pay the overtime. We have to do that. That's another argument that I would have for having a few more FTEs on staff. So that wasn't always the issue, because I don't, I've never heard where it's not the issue, as of late. So I'd just throw that out there.
Commissioner Mejia, anything on rebound?
Um, not on rebound. I guess my question would be, you know, you've been paying for this out of pocket, or out of your budget, and so is this something that could be continued to be absorbed by your bud, by your bu, own budget, and if not, why not?
If it's helping with overtime, maybe?
Well, we, we are, and I, I can refer a lot to Robin, because we have had a lot of conversations about budget, about what overtime looks like and what it doesn't look like. And with the rebound program, the reason why I, I was hoping that we would get it into our budget is because of the benefits to the entire county, to the, to not, not just to, well, it's to the men and women who work here, but it also ensures that the men and women are being taken care of more, more quickly to get them back to work. And that's the whole thing, is that what our staffing does look like. We've had many talks about what staffing looks like, what it is, or what it shouldn't be. And Commissioner Edwards is right, we're, we've been the lowest, one of the lowest staff sheriff's office in the state, but it's been like that since I started working for him in 1993. So we've always been in that low range. And we're, I'll, I'll lean into the two deputy requests, is that right now, we, we in law enforcement throughout the nation, we've seen what we call the Great Resignation. Forty percent of all people have resigned from their jobs in law enforcement, whether they have time in to be able to collect a retirement check, or have just decided to claim, change careers. The best part about the sheriff's office, and I would like to think is because of the men and women who work for the sheriff's office, I have 196 people sitting on my list to want to be, or to want to work for Thurston County Sheriff's Office in the law enforcement aspect. On the corrections side, I have 98 people on the waiting list who want to get into corrections. So although we have, if you will, the vacancies, the vacancies, a lot of, a lot of the vacancies are caused by, A, I have individuals in the sheriff's office who have been here for a long time. I have one sergeant who's been here 41 years, and he's retiring at the end of this month. I've had people who've been here 30-plus years that are retiring out of corrections. So we've had people here for long terms that are retiring now that are creating positions. The other part is that it's kind of an interesting phenomenon, and Chief Toma and I were speaking about it earlier this morning, is that nowadays, we have seen more vacancies in every law enforcement agency throughout the state, and throughout the United States. But a lot of our corrections deputies are now being offered law enforcement. We're taking law enforcement tests to get into law enforcement, and we haven't ever really seen that before, is them being offered jobs. Because to get into corrections, you still have to go through a polygraph, a psych, it's still a long process. And now that some of them are seeing that maybe they want to get into law enforcement. So that's why we're seeing a lot of corrections openings, if you will. Also- Also, within the sheriff's office, the deputies who work in corrections are, uh, coming over to the law enforcement side. So, they're able to work in corrections for a few years, and then they take the test, they pass it, and they're able to transition through a background process, transition over into the law enforcement aspect. And we've been doing that for as long as I've been with the sheriff's office. So, it's actually good for the patrol side, bad for the corrections side. And the reason why I say it is because I have, i- it's, it's awesome to see people in corrections decide, I wanna, I wanna be in the law enforcement side now, and, and they've already worked for the sheriff's office, so they know how we operate, they ha, they have an idea of what they're getting themselves into, and they can transition. The hardest part we are right now is because of corrections, we do have a recruiter that is going out to, uh, everywhere that she can to recruit. Um, and, uh, we're also spending a lot of time at JBLM and other locations and colleges to recruit, uh, for corrections. And, like I said again, the best, the best recruiters that we have are our people, so.
What is the current vacancy in corrections?
Corrections, we currently have eleven. But again, like the sheriff had mentioned, uh, typically, it, it's not unheard of for somebody to start out in corrections and then move over to the law enforcement side. And I've seen that throughout my career, I actually took advantage of it myself. But it's a little, little different now, because I've never seen this many law enforcement jobs available. Typically, you know, we would see two to three maybe per year. Right now, I've got at least ten people who are in the process of testing for law enforcement, whether it's internally within our own agency or externally with other agencies. So, that number alone is just something I've never seen before.
What's that number for law enforcement vacancies?
Uh, we're down five.
Wow.
And we have, uh, three conditional offers out. The, the part with the law enforcement, uh, is that I recently had a deputy, he was number two in his class, and, uh, he resigned. He was involved in an incident, I'd been on the FTO six days and he resigned. And, and he, he just, um, he just probably had second thoughts. Where I would look at what we're seeing, uh, with, uh, the vacancies, I have, uh, four people that are currently on field training. I have four that are in the academy, I have four more that are going into the academy in November, so, um...
So, okay, nice topic there, so you're saying vacancies, that's not counted as a vacancy, because you've, they're, they're in the middle of training, but they're not actually out there?
The, yeah, that's not a vacancy. The vacancies that I have, like, the three that are pending, they're being off, conditional job offers, and they're coming out of corrections, but I'm not going to fill that job until I get an academy date for them, and I'm gonna keep them working at corrections until I can get them into the academy. Then I'll have two positions left to fill. So, that's, so, I have the three conditional offers out, I still have two vacancies left right now.
And then, and then the folks that are, like, in the academy and, but not quite yet out in the field, have, you said?
Those are, those are still filled, but we still pay them.
But how many of those are there at this time?
There's a total of twelve, I'm looking. Yeah.
I guess I'd just point out, having been there, that those officers really are not as effective as you would think a police officer should be in all, uh, all areas of law enforcement, until they get a couple of years in out on the street. So, it's, uh, it's a real drain to try and fill the void. And I, and I might mention that in the seventies, when I started, uh, it was mandatory that you spend your first couple of years in jail. They didn't even have a corrections division, it was just, you started in the jail, and the reason for it was they got to see what, if you were able to come to work, if you were able to interact with folks, and you got to see how you fit the agency. So, actually, it's went back almost to that through a voluntary position rather than mandatory.
I, I would say that the best part is, is that we are able to look at our individuals coming from corrections, because I get input from the chief and the captains, and the captains make sure that they interview their supervisors to make sure that, are they, are they gonna be a good fit for patrol side? And how, how have they been as a deputy within the sheriff's office, whether it's correct, being in corrections? So, that's part. The, the part is, as Commissioner Edwards was mentioning, is that the academy is six months. Well, I'm hiring them right now, uh, I think the longest one's been there, uh, he'll have been there two months before he gets to go to the academy. Now, uh, Commissioner Mejia wasn't here back then, but just a few years ago, we were having people wait six months. I'm looking at Robin, because she's, she remembers those days, when we were, we had, we had people waiting six months to go to the academy. And what I do foresee is that the academy will probably be experiencing that again, uh, pretty soon. So, I know that, uh, the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Center is looking at the two academies, both in Burien and in Spokane. And I know that they've made a proposal to the governor's office about how they can serve both sides and more academy classes, because the biggest issue that the justice training is seeing is that it takes, um, you, you need the instructors. Well, if, if I have instructors from east, who work in eastern Washington, wanna work for the CJTC in Burien, well, it's four, four or five days a week there, so, there's no commuting, so then who's paying for the housing? They're away from their families, there are a lot of stuff, that's why they're also proposed several different locations for that. And just another reminder is that the corrections academy now is also ten weeks. It used to be four, and now it's ten, so, we're also seeing that. And I would say that Thurston County Sheriff's Office is very blessed to have the staffing we have. I know that, um, just talking to Ms. Qualley, uh, the other day, they're actually down thirty corrections deputies in Disqualing Jail. Just in the jail.
That is not a facility.
And I know that, uh, with, uh...
You might mention you don't use them, do you, as contractors?
No, but, but Lakewood does.
There's a reason for that.
Lacy does.
Lacy does.
Lacy does.
I know they do, they're getting a chance.
Some water uses them for misdemeanors, um, but, uh, yeah, it's, uh, it, it's something that we're all facing, uh, just for staffing. I know that what I've seen when people have left the sheriff's office, they have not left to other agencies for hiring bonuses. So, I, I, and, uh, the three that, I've had three go to Lacy, but Lacy's about two thousand dollars more.
A month.
A month. And then you're looking at, uh, one, uh, went to Centroya for the, uh, the medical benefits after retirement, uh, through the bargaining unit. And then, um, I had two go to, uh, two go to Texas. And the rest have, uh, chosen to choose other careers. One, uh, became a firefighter, so, that's what we're seeing. They're not leaving the sheriff's office for bonuses, um, so.
Any other questions on the sheriff's topic, guys? And I'll turn it back to the sheriff.
Well, well, on leaving, I think I'll just comment on this, that it takes a, a unique individual to work by themselves out there. And so, if an officer leaves to go to a police agency, as a general rule, your backup is right there with you most of the time, but within a minute, maybe you've got backup for your situation, whatever that might be. In rural America, it's not uncommon that they'd have to wait for fifteen minutes for backup. And that, I'm not saying anything detrimental to the, about the deputy that chooses to leave, he's probably thinking ahead a little more, because he's gotta think about his family and a lot of other things that come into this, am I gonna come home tonight? Most of these officers are faced with, am I coming home tonight? As a regular activity on their job every day.
Uh, and I appreciate you, uh, mentioning that, Commissioner, and one of the biggest things that we have done, is that when we have priority calls, um, we have asked the deputies to at least wait for another backup. Just because of that fact, is that we are seeing more violent crimes occurring within this county that we hadn't seen before. I don't wanna say that we hadn't seen before, it just, um, I think the incident in the Winkell parking lot really took us by surprise. And that was something that, uh, really, uh, affected a lot of deputies. Cause it just appeared to be, well, random. Ra, a, a random, a random thing. So, that's, that was, it was really hard.
Thank you, guys.
Thank, thank you for the time.
Thank you for coming.
And, uh, be careful with all those snacks, I might stop by and grab one if you're not late.
If you're lucky, you'll get something Rob and fixed, I don't know what she fixed this morning.
Just take, take one of the ones with the nuts.
Oh, okay, I didn't know Rob and did. It's been smelling good all morning.
Take one with you.
No, I've been, I've been disciplined.
I ain't going to do it.
Thank you so much for stopping by.
Yeah, I'm sure. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ma'am, Sheriff, back to you, you called the shots now. Will we have a break for that before the auditor, or?
The auditor is due up at nine forty-five, so.
We got a six-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Break down.
Your life. Okay, we are back from break. It is 9:56 a.m. and we have Auditor Hall here who's going to be presenting on Thurston County Auditor's Revenue Trends.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we've got a PowerPoint. Romero's going to drive. I'll just let you know, excuse me, when to change the slides. Okay, next slide. So the first thing I want to talk about is there are basically three areas that we are needing to reduce revenue. One is elections, one's recording, one's passports. I'm going to start with elections. And it's important to understand odd year versus even year costs. In odd years, we typically bill all of our election costs to the Port, PUD, City's Town School, and Fire. And in even years, we used to absorb all of it, but unfortunately, fortunately, this is the first year that the state is actually going to pick up the share for state and federal election costs. So this is great news. Next slide. So if the ballot measure passes this fall, we will have two commissioner races on the ballot. As I mentioned earlier, typically, we bill all of that revenue. So with the two commissioners on the ballot, we anticipate that the share will be $307,000. So while it's not an expense, really, because we have to conduct the election anyway, our revenue without those on the ballot would be approximately 1.3 million. So it's going to be just under a million dollars with the two commissioners on the ballot. So that's our biggest revenue adjustment right there. I also want to give you a picture, a snapshot of the last 20-year recordings by month. And this really is dependent on real estate, so real estate transactions. So as you can see, it goes up and down. That's just the fact of real estate. Next slide. So you can see, pre-pandemic, which is 2019, we're kind of trailing along that line, a little under. But if you look at 2020, and that's when the market really started going crazy, and 2021 was really busy, and largely due to the low interest rates, and people were refinancing their houses. So the refinance market was huge during that timeframe. You know, now, interest rates have gone up, and there's very little inventory on the market. So people aren't selling their houses, therefore people aren't buying houses. Next slide. But the good news is, if you look back, I think that's, I can't see the bottom of that slide, but I think that's back in 2016. You know, our revenue versus expenditures, we're a lot closer together. If you look at 2022, our revenue is still much, much larger than our expenditure. So that's the good news, and that's the good trend. Okay, next slide. And as you can see from the slide, we budget very conservatively. We'd rather under-budget revenue than over-budget revenue, because we don't want you to think there's more money than there really is. But the real estate market has always outperformed our guestimates. And of course, that's what a budget is. It's a guess. And it was really apparent in 2021, when we were ridiculously understated in our revenue. So we figured, okay, we didn't see any reason why the market wouldn't continue. So we took a big leap, largest budget increase we've ever made, and we went up to $720,000. And then interest rates started to ride market tank. So we've reduced it for 2023. But I also want to point out, while the recording transactions are down, our licensing transactions and revenue are up. You know, pre-COVID, year-to-date, we're at about 56,731 transactions. And year-to-date in 2022, we're at 44,575. But the transaction from subagents is up. So what we did during COVID was we really tried to push business their way, and we promoted them, and tried to encourage customers to go to our subagents. And we get the same revenue, whether we do the transaction or the subagent does the So our revenue is up 22% from 2019. So that's the good news. There was also a bill that went through the same year. The election cost bill was passed in that we get extra dollar per transaction or per licensing fee. So that's bringing in another $600,000 in revenue a year. Next slide. So passports has been a rocky road since we started in 2018. We got off to a strong start. It's brought in about $246,000, almost $247,000 since we started. But then, when COVID hit, we had to suspend service in March 2020, and we didn't resume until July 13, 2021. We received another passport position, but that went unfilled until Monday. So we were counting on being in the atrium where we had the space to have more people issuing passports, but that didn't happen. So we didn't, we didn't fill the position. Once we knew that there was a pretty firm date, we went out for that position. So when we're at the atrium, we're going to have actually three areas where we could issue passports. And it's been designed in such a way that, you know, everybody can share where photos are taken and that sort of thing. And the other thing that's, I think, notable regarding passports is they've moved Real ID, the Real ID deadline, a couple times, but I'm pretty certain that this one's for real, because I was in Chicago recently, and that was plastered everywhere, that beginning in October 2023, you would no longer be able to get on an airplane without a passport or an enhanced driver's license. So I think that's going to really drive up passports from now until then. And once it really starts being promoted heavily, I don't know what kind of promotions they're going to do, but I think we're going to see passports pick up, because it's just a better thing to own. It gives you more bang for your buck to have a passport than an enhanced driver's license. Next slide. So in summary, I think we manage our expenses well. So we're going to underspend quite a bit in 2022, then we're reducing in 2023. So our projected giveback is about $619,000. So our expenditures are going to be about $735,000 less, and $116,000 less than budget and projected revenue. So that's a breakdown on the three areas that we reduced the revenue. The largest, of course, is elections, then recording, which is, you know, nobody has a crystal ball, and passports. But I wouldn't be surprised. I think our passport revenue could be up a little bit. But again, I like to estimate conservatively, because I don't like coming and having to do these type of presentations before the board. Next slide. So anyway, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Mary, the only question I'd have real quick is, why do you say it's better to have a passport over an enhanced driver's license? Because I get asked some of that one. So what's the deal there?
You can travel out of the country with a passport. You can't travel out of the country with an enhanced driver's license.
Okay, like Canada or Mexico.
Just about the same, the same cost.
Right.
You can get all the value of the Real ID plus.
Plus, you can travel. Okay, good. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. The election and recording pieces are very, very logical and straightforward. We had questions originally about the passport issue. You and I talked about that one-on-one, and you answered those questions. So I'm comfortable with everything you've described.
Right. And passports is the one service we provide that is not required in statute. So, I mean, if it doesn't pencil, you know, maybe it doesn't make sense to continue to issue them. But I think it's going to pencil. There are very few places in Thurston County to obtain a passport. We're the only place that is open during regular business hours, five days a week. And I think Real ID is going to, you know, we're going to see increased volume. But, you know, if we get to a point where it doesn't pencil, I mean, we can stop issuing passports. That's not required by state or federal law.
Robyn, you had a question?
Yeah, Mary, right now, the passport applications are by appointment only, and you can only schedule for two weeks out, and it's really hard to get an appointment.
Oh, yeah, we're book solid.
Yeah. So when do you think you might be opening that up a little more?
So as soon as we get to the atrium, we're going to allow what we're calling standby. So anybody can walk in, but they're not, you know, we're going to serve the people that have the appointment first. So they may have to wait a little longer. But, you know, we'll just, we'll have multiple people issuing passports. So it shouldn't be that long. It takes about 20 minutes to issue a passport.
Right. And I've been looking for an open spot on for like three weeks and never been able to find one.
Well, we could, you know, you know the auditor. She could put you on. Well, we could, you know, you know, the auditor, she could put you on it.
I don't want to take advantage of that. They say it's really hard to find a spot.
Just like when your dentist can't, you know, has an opening, it's like, we had a cancellation, we can get you in.
I think we need to follow the rules.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I share my answer? Questions? For me, I think passport service, it really is a great service. And you're absolutely right. There's not many places in Thurston County that offer that service. And so people have to travel out. And so just the ability to have it here. So my question is in regards to those two weeks, and it's just, I guess, for my own knowledge, not really. Is it, you know, why, why is it by two weeks and not maybe like calendar out for like a month instead?
It was just a decision we made.
Okay.
We could change it to a month, but yeah. It's just a decision we made. But I think, you know, in a couple of months, I think it's going to be a lot easier for people to get in. But I think the appoint, having appointments is important, especially for parents who are bringing their children in. They might have three children and need to get passports, you know. We don't want them standing in the lobby for for, you know, twenty minutes, forty minutes, you know, waiting to get served. So.
On that point, because I deal with this with Kaiser, I think you need to have, you need to, you need to have it open far enough that there are open slots. Because if if it's, if it's only two weeks, but two weeks is always booked, people will go on once, and they're all filled, and they won't know when to go back if ever. I just give up. It's because if, you know, otherwise, you're going to have to sit there and check every day or every week, like that's too cumbersome. So whatever the time window is you need to where they're not all full, and somebody can go on once and see an opening, even if it's in six weeks, I want to be able to schedule. I don't care how long I have to wait. I just don't want to have to go back seven, eight, nine times. So whatever that window is, is probably how long it ought to be open.
Yeah, we could try that. Pierce County has it open a month, and they're always booked solid a month out.
Yeah.
So we, yeah, I don't know what that, I don't know where that sweet spot is, but we can certainly play with that.
Maybe we can start stealing some of their business.
Yeah, that's right.
County manager?
Hey, Mary, I think the passport service is an incredible service to the residents of Thurston County. I recall the conversations they used, and I started having back in late seventeen, early eighteen. And for my humble point of view, I believe that it's a successful program. And through the years, I personally received some feedback from individuals who have used the service. Well, how grateful, because they compared to this sort of, to the the USPS, right? Through the, and that's two hours here, two hours there. Here, you have eight hours in a way to provide services. In addition to the availability is is how well your staff is trained and the customer service is impeccable. So goodness to you.
Yeah. You know, unfortunately, we have had to like cease operation, call customers if we have too many people out sick. So you know, so this new person is going to help, and hopefully we'll not not have to do that anymore. So.
I will say that the lady who works in downtown Olympia, Jefferson, in passports, is one of the nicest ladies there is, and she's helped me on multiple occasions. So.
She takes the worst pictures. My pictures are awful. Do you do that here as well, Mary? Do you guys take the pictures here and everything?
We do. And we'll actually let you look at the picture. We charge more than.
We don't have to go to Walgreens. Good.
So our pictures bring in revenue also.
Wonderful. Okay. Any further questions? Auditor, anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so. I'm, you know, proud that we did, we aren't coming to ask for anything.
Well, thank you so much. And you do have a request on the policy. I'm I'm not sure. We don't, we didn't have any questions about that, but I was wondering if, well, we have you here if you wanted to speak on it, which was.
It's, it is the, it's for election equipment, and it is coming out of Fund ten ninety, which is the, yep, election reserve.
So just wanted to see if you wanted to say anything. We didn't have any questions on it that I recall, but.
We expect to spend that money on the Mottman project. You know, there are going to be certain security things that that we're certainly willing to pay for that may be outside of the scope of a normal thing that a contractor would put in. And then, of course, there's potentially, we might get another scanner. We're evaluating that prior to the presidential election. We have three right now, and those are well over a hundred thousand dollars. So we're basically just rolling it from this year, because we didn't spend it into next year. We just want to make sure that we have budget authority is really why we're doing that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, Mary.
Of course. Have a great day.
You too.
Bye.
A minute. Now we just, now what are we going to run up to our session?
Now we go back to the spreadsheet, we got where we left off. And the last two pages of the policy spreadsheet are are the rest of the line items.
I'm already done one.
No, you've marked them all. All right.
So this agenda is not accurate, right?
The the agenda, as we talked about yesterday, we did not get through all of the morning items. And rather than going later into the day yesterday, the board has chosen to work through today. So we're going to pick up now with wrapping up the line by line items, then talk about expenditure trends in offices and departments, and the reason there were reversions in the general fund. You'd ask for some information on timber revenue. We've got a high level piece of that ready. And then review of all of the, well, not all of them, but some of the larger funds in the county. We're going to look at re the ERNR detention sales tax, you've seen treatment sales tax. We have some information on the clerk's LFO fund. You'd ask for the medic one fund. So we'll take a look at all the funds. So we're, we're picking up all of that that we didn't get to yesterday. I'm sorry, did I, was that not your question?
That's good.
Okay.
That's a lot more than my question. That's why I'm a little, my question was just, it said that on the, the agenda says we're done at eleven thirty. I know you were working through lunch and and going to four or ish. And so I was just trying to figure out what what the agenda looks like, and you just covered all that.
Yep, all that.
Who do I send my scores to?
We we will pick them up. You don't need to, as long as you save them, we'll be able to go in and get them.
Save them in your, in your PDF file.
Yeah.
Yep. And then we have, we have Commissioner Edwards.
What was the last one, the last?
The last one on the list was fifty six.
Fifty six. Okay.
I read mine while Kurt was here yesterday, and he wasn't.
When he was talking about. That's great.
And I, just so, Commissioner Edward, you made a question yesterday about me and after I was gone about, you know, was I, was I going to be up to speed or have a chance? And I watched the rest of the session last night. So I'm all good. Thank you. I didn't have really any questions that you guys didn't ask, so.
All right. So starting at the top, we are on the policy line item worksheet. And on page eight, at the top of the page, line fifty nine, this is a request coming from IT. But the request is to support financial services and HR through an extension of the project positions related to the ERP. I will say that the ERP has been way more work than I think any of us realized it would be. And the temporary positions that we have are absolutely necessary to get us through the rest of the implementation and standing it up and making sure that the system is running right next year. And we, even though we're going to go live on January first, there's going to be a whole lot more work to do after go live to make it work the way we need it to. So this extends the temporary positions that are supporting implementation of the ERP.
Also known as TC Connect.
Yes, that is the new, that is the new label. Someone won the naming contest, TC Connect. So if you see emails from TC Connect, it's, it is the ERP or Oracle. And we are requesting that the additional time is through the end of twenty twenty three.
And that's the one twenty one?
That is, yep, one hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred. That'll be charged to the project.
TC Connect is not the trail program.
Correct. TC Connect is the ERP. Yeah, we rejected a few names that were confusing, but that one stuck. The next item on the list is also related to the ERP. We are asking for an additional budget position, because next year, starting in late January, we start the implementation of the budget module. We haven't even begun that yet, and it is scheduled to go live by June thirty of next year, and it is going to be a tremendously heavy lift. Yeah, see the budget team, they think I'm nuts.
There you go, Nicole. Welcome to Thurston County. I mean, welcome to TC Connect.
Yeah.
It's going to go live when we have information to present to you.
While in the midst of everything, yeah.
That's right.
Oh, I, my husband filled out the balancing act yesterday when I'm away, with no, with no. No, it's like for me. And.
One of the twenty responses that we got.
So he was, he was playing around with it, and he was like, oh, you can do like basically anything, just like a couple of things. I didn't do any of the HR things. And I'm like, well, that's the things we're supposed to do. So his feedback was like, well, it's, he was like, I thought that you, it was more of an optional thing. And I was explaining to him, well, it's like not really optional when it comes to like risk management, like it's.
We didn't put those parameters in place. We didn't tell them that, yeah, this costs money, but you kind of have to do it. You don't get a choice, because otherwise.
And so he was like, oh, man, like.
For our first time out, we left it pretty flexible.
Yeah. And so did he, so like, the, one of the points is for people in your shoes to be like, oh, this isn't as easy as, like, if I were commissioner, this is what I would do. And then you have them in front of you and like, ooh, but I can't do this, because I've got this. So.
So in in his world, he he didn't do the risk management, and he did everything else, basically. And so.
He spent all of that money, all the risk money.
He was like, I even have like two hundred thousands left over.
Didn't use all the fun that we allowed.
You know, that's an exercise, because from the, from the policy perspective, they don't relate to what, something the the county must do.
Yeah. Yeah. When, when we, when we're a little more familiar with the tool and could make it a little more complex.
And put stuff in there about this is a mandatory obligation.
Right.
Because we didn't put that language in there. We just tried to put information in there so people would understand it. But you get to do what you want to do, and what would you pick?
Right. Would we build it next year when we're going into the biennium? One of the things you can do with this tool is you can enter thresholds that, so say for corrections, we cannot spend less than X and adequately staff the jail. So we can put in where citizens could say, I want to reduce the budget for corrections, but but it won't let them go below a certain amount.
They can't zero it down.
Yes, certainly not. And that will give us a little more real picture, but we need to get a little more familiar with how to set the tool up.
And the name and email is added as an optional.
Oh, good.
Yeah. And some people, it's optional, as some people chose to, some people didn't. One of the people who did is somebody I know, so she followed it off my Facebook page. Good job.
Yeah. Yeah, that's so great. We're so happy that he went in and you got some immediate feedback on it.
Is that Facebook post on that, Megan?
Yes, I got it.
It's on the homepage. It's been posted. Thurston Talk shared it. We'll be posting it multiple times on Facebook.
Yep.
And Instagram and Twitter.
I sent it via my newsletter that I send out on a monthly basis. I did an extra additional one. And sent it out.
And the Olympian picked it up last time, so maybe they picked up the simulate, the prioritization one, so hopefully they pick up this one.
I haven't seen yet, but I know Thurston Talk did.
I've got to send a note to Martine, and I'll be including that when I reply to him later today.
Yeah, I was going to see just.
You might have to read it.
All right. Well, back to back to the little of that.
Sorry. No, no, but you didn't even make a mess of that part.
Yeah, that's exciting. So back to this, the the hundred and forty five, almost hundred and forty six thousand is to pay for an additional senior management analyst to help us stand up the budget model.
Is that Dennis's shop?
No, it's it's senior management analyst that would be in our shop, and it will be a cost of the project. That's why it's coming out of IT. It's, it's not a IT person. It is a budget person.
Is that a sixty forty split of the general fund?
Actually, it's coming out of the, it's going to be it'll probably be less to the general fund, sixty forty, you know, maybe fifty five percent general fund, because it's the cost of the system. Split based on the cost of the system. All right. So.
But the ERP temporary positions are paid by the bond.
I'm sorry, what?
The ERP temporary positions are paid by the bond.
Right. It's part of the project cost, but eventually those have to get paid out.
No, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, if, yeah, that continues a permanent position, then it would be a split.
Even the temporary positions, it's paid by the bond upfront, but then the bond payments are are on a split. Yeah. So, okay, moving on into public health. Line sixty one is the request for a program assistant two in disease control for case investigation support. And this would, you don't see the revenue on these lines, but most, if not all of them, are the ones that Kurt talked about yesterday that are paid with the new money out of foundational public health. That's right? All right.
So most of those positions will be in front of the board prior to.
Nope.
I thought the.
Only three are in the midterm, and all the rest are here.
So being the argument that Kurt was saying is creating this position to start working on the rest of the financial public health programs.
So you and I can chat offline about this. If we need to move these back into the midterm, we've been moving them back and forth.
Okay, so where where it doesn't show revenue, you said it doesn't, it doesn't show there.
The the revenue doesn't show up on any of these lines, because you see the revenue where they parked the revenue is in the grants. So it's page two.
Can you just say grant funded or something like that? So we have some sense on which ones.
We we can.
Because I pay attention more when it says, whether there's nothing or when it says general fund.
Right.
I mean, I'm just throwing that out. Why not have it say grant or something?
That's appropriate. We, we talked to the department about. We, we talked to the department about putting the revenue along with these positions, so you could see the grants, that, that they're all grant funded. Uh at the end of the day, the vast majority, probably about ninety or more percent of public health is grant funded. I mean, it's, all the money comes from grants.
The money, are we, are we talking about foundational public health money?
For the most part, yes.
But that's not a grant, that's.
It's a, it's termed a grant, but it's coming from the state, it's, it's considered a grant.
Yeah, the state. Okay. Even though it's gonna be base level ongoing funding?
Yeah, grants aren't necessarily one.
Until they change the line somewhere down the road.
It's a grant.
But for now, it's a grant.
It's, it's a grant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, when is that, I guess when it's an outside source, we treat it as a grant because it's not internal.
Yeah. It's not revenue sharing.
And I, and I think I get what you're saying because grant has a, a somewhat of a, a period, an end date.
You think of grants as a project.
We need to use all kinds of money from the state, we get money like in the house homeless stuff, we don't call those grants.
Those are grants.
That's not how, that's not what I think of as a grant, it's not how we ever talk about it in this board. As that being, that kind of ongoing funding stream being grants. So that would be confusing to me if you started calling all of that grants. Is any money from anywhere that's not county tax source is grant? That's your definition of grant?
No, 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 the, so some of the money coming from the state is revenue sharing.
Okay, why isn't that on it?
Um, because it is tax based and designated by law to come to us. But this money is not, this is, this is at the whim, not only at the whim of the legislature, but also at the whim of the department. We don't have to, we do have to apply for it on a regular basis, we have to follow all the grant rules in state and federal laws. Um, all of this money, the housing money, um, you may not talk about housing money as grants, the vast majority of it is not. Um because a lot of what you deal with in housing is tax based, a lot of it is grant related, all the T rap money, all the E rap money. The Hen money is grants, the, um, yeah, it's all great.
The acronym.
Yeah, acronym, city, we need to talk about the state stuff, but all of it is a grant.
And, and the, all the money that comes through the con con is grants, even though it's a, a, as, pretty much a stable level. I think Kurt said it yesterday, Romero and I both uh heartily endorsed his statement that legislature can choose to not fund us tomorrow. They can take it all away, it's not guaranteed.
But the legislature can do that for all the tax sources, if they give us, you know, they get, those are just house bills that said, okay, you get so much of a document recording fee. Okay, well, the legislature next year could say you don't get that money. I don't understand the difference, they're just legislative acts.
So. So much, so. Well, perhaps they.
I mean, I'm not sure this really matters, but.
Well, it probably doesn't, but I think the, what Robin was describing grants is requires performance. To me, they intend to done money. When it's a straight revenue, it's just straight revenue, there is not a time constraint, there is nothing. And then financial public health, as we discussed in the last couple of occasions, it's an allocation on a year basis. And you need to perform, we need to perform in certain way to make sure uh we utilize the money in according to the scope of work.
You've identified, you've identified two different things, you've identified the source, is it tax based?
In the contract.
Where's it coming from and then what, what are the strings attached in terms of its use? Is it both of those or is it one of those, is it none of those?
Both of those.
Both.
So if both of those are true, it's a, it's a grant?
It has to also do with our reporting, so grants have different reporting requirements, um being if the source is federal or state. And so that also makes the difference between the uh, whether it's federal or not.
First, this position.
Right.
So we'll have to file reports about county talk.
And we're, we're subject.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh my gosh, the reporting, yeah.
It, 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 in fact, the, and in fact, that's what the additional positions are, just to make sure that we meet the intent of the, of the money that's coming from now.
And.
Because by the end of next June, June thirty two thousand and twenty three, if we don't spend the two point six million dollars that is coming, they take the money away. You cannot, we cannot roll over.
Right.
Right, it's not ours to just put in the bank.
Does the VAR's guide kinda cover some of this stuff where?
It does, it does, and, and at an even higher level, uh, federal, federal law.
Yeah.
It's all subject to the single allotted act, it's um.
You see that they're coming out with some new stuff for counties to follow on uh, on the funding, reporting.
How we, how we need some money. That's very good.
Yeah, GFOA had something about that.
Oh, right, yes, yes, the new standards, the, the, we all objected.
Yeah. I know, but it's coming, it sounds like.
It is coming, it does sound like it's coming. So I.
The trade is coming.
Right.
I understand the amount of money that has been going into public health has been a lot, so I understand the reason for why we added. But I'm seeing around three requests for either fiscal or account assistance and.
They need it.
They need it, they have, they have at least two hundred contracts in, in public health that they have to manage.
It's. They absolutely need it.
Like that we, we do with outside entities that they have to manage and if the money comes from the state or the feds. If we're, if they're a sub recipient, they are also responsible for reporting requirements and, and monitoring them.
Monitoring the, the sub recipients and almost every dollar that comes in results in a sub recipient. Contract in um, public health and sadly, we recently received a notice of non-compliance from one of our grantors. Um which is, we're, we're, we're not spending the money timely, we're not turning the reports in. We're not appropriately monitoring, these were not all listed, these are the things.
Who's in charge of all of this and?
What do you mean?
I mean, well, who's, I mean, call it like who's?
Yes, you are, the bug stops here.
The bug stops here, but we're not getting reports on this, like that's the thing, I mean, that's where my questions are coming from. Because we're not getting notices of this non-compliance, we're not getting any information that, you know, we're turning back money, we're not getting. And so. If this is happening in public health, why are we not, you know, for us, there's someone who is, you know, their accountant, I'm not sure what the position is. Who oversees the funding that they get, right, and.
This, this is the problem.
And so why are we not getting reports on that? So who, who currently is it over there, is it Corinne? That, and she's not recording us?
Corinne is busting ass, her, pardon my language, um.
She's the only, she's the only temporary, uh, Robin.
Robin Ratu is Robin who, she's amazing, she's temporary.
Any temporary person. We thought, we thought a nation public health.
And Corinne has been working on the COVID project for the last few years, so she has just been bumped back to her regular duties, which would be all this reporting.
Because we really didn't have enough staff to support the uh, public health in this avalanche of money that they brought in in COVID response.
You reviewed, you reviewed yesterday, the uh, ten year financial plan for eleven, eleven fifty. And that is the financial public health, it's just the amount of money that is coming. You reviewed the, the ten year financial plan for the housing fund. And if you compare two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty two, taking the, the COVID additional money in between, it's an incredible increase. So if, if the board wants to have reports on how we, 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 we send the reports to the state, I mean, you're more than welcome, we're more than welcome to.
Well, you can't, you, you, you can't tell us the bug stops here and then we've never even heard about any of this.
Yeah. We've never even heard of this issue that is happening.
So I mean, that's a disconnect, so.
We, we actually, we have brought this, you may, we, this may be the first time you're hearing about the totality of the problem. Um but we have talked to you, um, the, the, we were at risk of turning money back recently, we filled the gap. Um by moving COVID costs over, but you may recall a year ago, where, was it a year ago, a whole year ago, less than that? Where we turned money back uh, under one of our contracts because we couldn't spend it fast enough, it was left on the table. And we reverted a year ago CJTC, CJTC money. Um because they couldn't manage it and spend it fast enough.
But that's doing what we're supposed to do, that's not violating rules and not filing reports and, I mean.
That, that is, that is coming on top of some of these things. Part of the issue that I'm becoming more and more aware of is that the, the offices and departments. Within public health, the, the units, if you will. There has not been enough accounting staff to give each unit a regular status report. Um so they don't know that they're not spending all their money, they, they don't know that they're behind on their reports. And what has happened, public health has been understaffed in their accounting for a very long time. Um and then we experienced a ton of turnover. It had been a very stable uh, part of public health at the time I joined the county. And about a year, maybe two years after I started here, the person who had been the head of accounting there for twenty years retired. And since then, it has been a constant revolving door in their accounting office. And they were down to two people and Corinne was one of them, she was sucked off to COVID. Um and so Kurt found Robin Ratu, she is a former colleague from OFM. She has been um, doing, uh, she's been supporting Corinne, they've been trying to. And as I said, Corinne is doing an amazing job of trying to keep things together. Uh and they now have, um, you, you've just approved two FTEs. So that will give them, they're, they're recruiting for the senior management analyst, that's the temporary job Robin's in. Um Corinne, they have two other.
Two for housing.
Staff, two for housing.
They just hired a new housing person.
Right.
Who they, they stole from Public Works, so it's great that they have a new person, but that leaves Public Works in the.
Yeah, how many, how many accountants does uh, Public Works have, eight?
I, I'd eight probably.
Eight and public health has four and quite frankly, public health is far more complicated. They need these extra FTEs, you approved two, there's two more here, two or three more here. They need this support to be able to do the things that they need to do.
I, I guess what I would suggest, having been here a couple of years longer, is that you, I don't wanna scratch off old scabs or anything. You might visit with Romero offline on some of the public health issues we dealt with.
We've had audit findings in public health, we've had federal findings in public health.
I'm very. I'm very supportive of all that, I don't mean to suggest anything different, I'm just trying to figure, I'm getting lost in, in the. Like you just said, we approved, you know, some, you know, multiple positions pop up on consent agendas and then, and now we've got this spreadsheet.
Right.
And then yesterday I was watching online the, the presentation I missed about the presentation from Kurt. I just, I'm a lot like, I, it, there's positions here, there and everywhere and I can't get a sense of.
You're, you're, you don't see the brutality. So that is, yes.
That's the conversation that, that Robin and I need to have because my understanding is, most of those positions that are in front of you as part of the two thousand and twenty three budget adjustment. We perhaps, we need to bring those sooner for the board to approve this year because we need to, but uh, we need to resolve that issue because you're right.
Right.
I, you, you're right, it, it is confusing, you hear this, you see in front of you and you heard something different yesterday. And uh, and uh, I, I told everybody we need to resolve that.
Think we heard anything really different yesterday, you've just heard about these positions many times.
Right, it's not that I heard different, it's just that I'm just trying to connect the dots, are these, are these positions like, I was totally fine with what I heard yesterday from Kurt, are these just the positions?
Right.
Timing.
These are the positions that he talked about.
So let's just say yes and move on, cause I didn't hear my seatmates yesterday having any quibble about that, I certainly don't.
What I think, I think what we need to have a conversation with Kurt is how soon does.
Timing, we do need to have a conversation about timing.
It's timing, it's just the timing. What is, what is January first, two thousand and twenty three, this position will become available or sooner because they need.
Corinne, Corinne would say now.
Yes.
Well, that's like Corinne would say now, right?
Yeah, Corinne would say now, please.
Well, we've, they've approved the two accountants already, you've already approved two accountants on your Tuesday agendas.
And they're working on. And they're working on getting the physician discussion written and, and all of that hiring fun, cause again, you get the physicians approved, it still takes a while to hire people, so.
And they're trying to hire. Right.
And if, hope you don't steal any more from Public Works.
Well, they still got.
Or bring experienced people in, I mean, that, that's part of the, the.
Was Commissioner Edwards' point, was your point that um, it would be good to, if, if these are grant funded?
Public Works has.
That it would be good to somehow organize this so that it's shown here.
Well, it just makes it easier for me, so I don't spend a lot of effort. Uh I don't spend as much time on pass through grant funding as I do on general fund.
Right. Right.
That's, that's where I spend, cause I know that we, we've got not only funding coming through, but how do you argue against it?
Right.
You know, how do you argue against getting the money to do, to do a better job?
Well. I have a different opinion on that because just because we're getting this funding does not mean that we're gonna create all of these different positions. And I have a lot of concerns with, with a lot of the positions that are being requested and I mentioned that there, I'm not there yet. Just because we are getting this money, for me, it doesn't mean like, let's create all this, all these different positions. It just, it doesn't make sense to me, even if it is, I would want something that's going to be proactive and actually grant services for, for the citizens. And I appreciated what you said yesterday that we're going back to the drawboard and we're gonna discuss with commissioners on kind of where. Because I'm, I'm reading some of these and it's, it's just not connecting to me and, and I'm, and I'm missing that piece. I appreciated uh, the breakdown with accounting assistance, but Commissioner Mansour is right, we're seeing all these different accounting assistants. And it's like, well, how many do we already have and how many more are needed because I'm seeing.
Right. It would be helpful to see an org chart.
So what we.
Yeah, that's exactly right, and the thing is, let me just backfill what you said because what, this was me last night watching the presentation I wasn't here for.
Yeah, I'll.
I was channeling Commissioner Mansour.
Yeah, I heard you say that, Ramiro, thank you, thank you for trying to channel me. Um but the, what Kurt, Kurt's introduction to his presentation was. The foundational public health money has to be designed to put services on the street and they have to be services not provided anywhere else, that's the, that's the foundation predicate. Now we're talking about all this admin stuff, now again, just show me that, you know, I mean, I'm, I know we need the admin stuff, but I need to be sure that we're, that these things are lining up. Like does the admin fall into, doesn't sound like what Kurt was saying that this foundational health money is for.
So let, let, yeah, absolutely, so let us work with Kurt, um, and that will be part of the budget discussions. And we can probably bring the programs, the exercise, the, the board went uh, last fall. As to setting priorities on the programs that we'd like to see and at that point, we'll align the new positions as to related to those programs, will that work?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I need.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll work on that with Kurt, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll work with Kurt just, just to make sure that when that conversation occurs. Do you have a sense as to what positions will align to those different programs? Uh and I think that, that, that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I just wanna line it all up, like what are this, what are the buckets again and where does these admins, are, are they appropriate for that bucket? And then what, going to Commissioner Mejia's point, we have policy decisions to make here, like we made a policy decision in the first round to, to put all of the environmental health money towards septic pollution identification control. That was a decision we made and, you know, we can make it, now we've got more money coming, I heard it was gonna step up every year till twenty twenty five. And there are multiple, but so I mean, there is latitude here, I think this is an extra extraordinarily high priority for all the reasons Robin laid out. But I just gotta see where it fits into this whole pub, foundational public health money grant scheme, cause it's really complicated.
Uh I, so I think I, I understand the, the, what you're looking for, so I will work with Kurt and just to make sure that we'll bring all that together.
Commissioner.
I, I guess I'd say that, again, I guess it has, having to do with having been here a long time, you know, even in a different situation. The, the buck does stop here and the reason the buck stops here is, is a legal term, you knew or should have known.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not kidding you, that is a broad catchall, and I've been, to myself, as a public official, and nobody likes that. Okay, we all agree on that, but it does, I mean, and that's part of the reason for these positions having oversight. I mean, all the way down, I've bugged Romero for a long time about making sure he signed off on the voucher list before I ever got it. And there is no way that we can know the different items on that, but yet we are responsible for it.
Remember the asset inventory?
Yeah, yes, that's part of it, that's part of it.
Yes. That's exactly.
We had to all sign.
Yeah.
Before you were here. We had to all sign, yeah, before you were here. We all had to sign this like incredible like sheet that it is every little asset of that Pearson County.
Right, but it 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 was unfair. It was unfair. So the board changed that and now you have the department directors ahead of the offices.
It's crazy.
A testament to the fact that those assets.
And that kind of gets us off the hook. And when he signs on that, that.
But then the board still, it doesn't get you off the hook though.
It kind of, but not totally.
Right, not totally.
Just new or new or should have known.
And you may recall that when we have the state auditor in, their letters go to the board accounting commissioners. They may have their liaison in the county auditor's office, but they're communicating to the board accounting commissioners. And when they talk about um the duty to put adequate financial controls in place, they're looking at you to do that. Um.
I don't like it either.
Because at the end of the day, the buck stops here and the audits are on you. And and whether or not we pass these things, there's got to be adequate infrastructure. And and I think you've had a conversation with the state auditor about how do you think things are going? And do you think there's anything we need to be concerned about? I have that conversation with them every year. And I think they've talked to you.
Talked to the chair.
Um.
Usually this board is.
But they do, they have the conversations with the chair.
So it's coming up with Commissioner.
Yeah, so it is, it is.
I have this problem, this personality problem where I cannot do like half halfway just doesn't work for me. Like, if if it's my job, then I'm going down into the weeds and I'm gonna ma- I'm gonna control every aspect of it. If it's not, then I'll just.
We need we need seven commissioners.
I trust my staff. I like that. But we can't, I can't be halfway when you're something.
I understand. But also, it's, you know, the 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 policy decisions that you make and we talk about everything stops with you. And because you're responsible for everything. But you you need to rely on the staff to make sure that we bring adequate support to you. And that's what we, you you hire staff to work for you. Because it will be absolutely impossible for the three of you to get down to the level of detail and understand uh payment
Yeah, yeah.
twelve hundred on a voucher list.
I I every once in a while just pick randomly something on the voucher and I try and figure it out. I do. I spot you.
Spot check.
And mostly, well, I I can figure it out a few, but sometimes I have to call somebody in a different. But sometimes I go to her, he hasn't, haven't stumped you yet.
It does it bug you?
So we will get you some better information. I I will also share with you, I've I've been chatting with Robin Ratu. She is working hard uh with Corinne and they are trying to sort out one of the things we've been missing in public health for a long time. They're trying to do it now. And that is to align all the money that's coming in with exactly where it's being spent.
So I I think the org chart would be really helpful because who is, the reason I brought up Corinne is because she was here yesterday and she spoke with when Kurt asked her a question.
Yep.
Um, so I was guessing that might have been their financial.
She she is.
The grant manager.
The she's in a grant manager position, but we really need to be talking about her being in a different kind of position.
Uh, I'm I'm working at that without getting into much, but um she she is carrying a heavy, heavy load.
Yeah.
So who's their financial manager? Who's the overlapping?
Yeah. The the position is vacant. They are, it's a senior management analyst position and Robin Ratu is in a temporary, she's only here until mid-December.
Cause she she retired from the state.
Yep.
And and we were very fortunate to for her to come and help us while we looked for a permanent position.
It's vacant.
And again, because the person who was in that position went to the treasurer's office.
And she was only there for about a year.
Yep.
Treasurer is close to her.
And and the person prior to that was only with us for, Marcia was here about two or three years.
Probably.
And before that, there was uh significant issues that we should not talk about in an open meeting.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
I went to Marcia's exit interview. I was invited to that one and it was it was sad. But I will not talk about it in a public forum, but I got her frustration.
Yeah.
What was her position?
She was the um.
She was the financial.
Financial person.
Yeah, senior management analyst.
Sorry, I'm like, I don't know the title, the full title.
That's the official title, but she was the head head finance person. And did she talk to you about understaffing in that area?
Yeah, she she spoke.
At length about different issues.
There there is part of the issue um is that that person who should be thinking strategically, financially for the organization. Uh, they are so understaffed in accounting that their head person is just in the weeds, processing payments, trying to do paperwork, and they have very little capacity for the strategic thinking that needs to be done. And it's a complex organization. So uh let's, we'll move on.
I hate to have you guys see me plug into beer pipes. But it's a reality.
It it also seems we're 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 talking about specific individuals. You know, I I know I'd also like to send kudos to Erin 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 Berkeley.
Yeah.
Because she has stepped up in terms of helping Corinne the budget. She's the executive assistant to the director.
Yeah, Erin has picked up quite a bit too.
Have a good.
So we're sixty three now?
Alright. Yeah. Well, I'm sixty three is the um, again, I believe these are uh be funded with the foundational public health money. Um, and this is removing the end dates from positions in environmental health. Uh, the currently these end in twenty two, I think, and they're extended. Oh, they're not extended. They're they're simply removed. The end dates are removed. And these positions um support the National Estuary Program. Not a lot of clarity in exactly what these staff do.
Isn't this one that art oversees this?
This is this is in environmental health. Yep.
And is this, this is pass through money, isn't it?
It would be foundational public health and it doesn't say exactly what these staff will do.
Yeah, it says the three positions listed above, but I don't, what position is?
Uh, I I need to spot there.
What's going on?
There's a suspicious package here with wires coming out, so we need to like.